Good evening. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. We're gathered here on November the 19th, 2024, at approximately 7:00 PM in council chambers at Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, we'll have our invocation from Pastor Ray Roten of Bethel Community Church, followed by our flag salute. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we are grateful to approach your throne of grace tonight with our hearts open, much like King David said in Psalm 18:19, "He brought me out of a spacious place; he rescued me because he delighted in me." We ask that you guide our thoughts, words, and decisions in this council meeting as we govern this city. May we also strive with wisdom and compassion. Help us to create a spacious place for these citizens in our community where everyone can thrive, where justice and peace can prevail. Lord, you have shown great delight with us by placing us in the roles of leadership here in this community. Never let us take this responsibility lightly. Instill us tonight a spirit of cooperation, understanding, and foresight. May your actions reflect your love and care for each person that makes up this wonderful community. Bless this meeting with your presence, that we might serve not only with our abilities, but with your divine guidance. We pray for the unity among the members here, that despite our differences, we might find common ground for the betterment of all of the community. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have some presentations and proclamations.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to call the roll?
Great point. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Shriver?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
This time, we'll have some presentations and proclamations. First one will be presented by Mr. Shriver, Councilman Shriver. Anybody with a library, as well as Ms. Albright, please come on up.
Library Board members, bring yourselves up here.
She's old, but she's fairly good.
Whereas Margaret Albright has served with unwavering condition, dedication on the Yukon Library Board for over 30 years, witnessing contributing the library's evolution from an air of physical materials to a modern digital landscape, embracing innovations that assure continued access to knowledge and resources for all residents. And whereas Margaret Albright has been tireless advocate for Yukon Library, attending countless county commission meetings to secure funding, speaking passionately at the city meetings, and promoting the library's virtual role throughout the community. And whereas I, in addition to her services on the library board, Margaret Albright has contributed on the Yukon community through her precipitation, or...
Participation.
I'm sorry, on the park board, her membership in the library's lady club, her involvement in the Integris Hospitals Knitter Group, and her dedication to her church. And whereas Margaret Albright and her husband E. Mill moved here to Yukon from Germany in 1961 upon becoming U.S. citizens in 1968, Margaret further her civic engagement by serving the pole worker for over 50 years. And she has been recognized with an honoring membership in the Daughters of America's Resolution. And whereas Margaret Albright's legacy of her library advocate continues through her family, with her great-grandchildren often accompanying her to visit the Yukon Library, symbolizing long-life impact of her commitment and literacy to learning in our community. Therefore, I, Adam Shriver of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 19th, 2024 as Margaret Albright date.
Well, I don't think it's turned on.
I've known Marguerite for a long time, and she is one of the standard bearers of good old Yukon. She's been here since God was a boy, always welcoming new people into club or onto library board or into the library. She's always there with her family. She's always there if you need anything. I love you.
I also grew up with her and E. Mill. I don't know if you know this, but we used to own some property with you guys out at Rainbow Lake years and years ago. We owned the place right beside y'all for many, many years, and I appreciate y'all letting us deer hunt before we were part of that community out there, so thank you. Thank you so much.
At this time, with the Main Street members, members of the Main Street Board, as well as small businesses on Main Street, come on up, and we're going to present the Small Business Saturday proclamation.
You have a business on Main Street?
Whereas the city of Yukon, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Whereas in Oklahoma, more than 370,000 active small businesses, accounting for 99.4% of all businesses in the state. These businesses employ over 717,000 people, 15% of the people making up more than half of the state's workforce. Whereas on average, Oklahoma startups create at least five jobs in their first year, which is the 13th highest average in the nation, and have a startup survival rate of nearly 82%. And whereas the American Express Consumer Insight Survey reported that the projected spending of U.S. consumers who shopped at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday in 2023 reached an estimated $17 billion, with more than 2/3 of shoppers strongly agreeing that they'll continue to shop small because of the impact that it has on local communities. Whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and that every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of the employees and the local businesses purchasing local goods and services. Whereas the city of Yukon, Oklahoma supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. The city of Yukon, the advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I, Brian Pillmore, the mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday, and I urge all of the residents of our great community to shop small at these local businesses. Represented here, we have businesses with much history, 50-plus years with Davis Carpet, as well as our latest business here, Knights Nook, a local bookstore on Main Street. So shop small.
I have one here.
And Adam.
And Adam.
And Adam. Pause. Bring your pets to Adam's. Mr. Craig, if you're able, come on up. Whereas the Christmas season is fast approaching, and this is the time of year for so many opportunities for friendship, fellowship, frivolity, and the sending of joy to the world. Whereas for over 50 years, the Christmas Philatelic Club has been engaged in sharing the spirit of Christmas all year. And during the month of December 2024, there will be a special pictorial postmark offered through the Yukon Post Office that anyone can obtain and have placed on their holiday mailings. This is an additional way that we can all share joy to the world. The Philatelic Club's stamp looks as such, and you can achieve this by going to your local post office and be stamped with it. Be it resolved that December 2nd is hereby designated as Christmas Philatelic Club Day in the city of Yukon, and all citizens of our community are encouraged to request the Christmas Philatelic Club postmark for their holiday mailings during the month of December.
I want to thank you, sir, because I had to look that word up to find out what it meant. You gave me a new vocabulary word this week.
At this time, we'll have our visitors section of our agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time. State your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of Yukon business.
My name is Johnny Wardwell. I live at 1913 Y Street, Yukon, 73099. And I want to express my concern for the future of Yukon's free public library. When our family, I've moved about 10 times in my adult life, so when our family moved from community to community, we sought out two things as soon as we arrived. One was our church, and the second thing was the library. This little card has opened worlds to me throughout my lifetime, my children's lifetime, my grandchildren's lives, that money can't buy. I just want you to know that a library is not a warehouse for books. You hear the word circulation related to libraries, and I think that that's an appropriate analogy, just like blood circulates in our bodies. Libraries circulate books and digital media and all kinds of things that maybe you don't know, but also ideas and concepts, conversations, relationships. It provides access and resources to information, too. No, libraries are not obsolete. They are constantly evolving to include the most recent technology. Community groups meet there. Community information and resources are available there. Part of my life experience is a grant writer. I was on both sides of the table as a writer and also as an evaluator of grants. Grants are hard to get. Sorry, they're not. Some people think it's easy, but it's not. And evaluators look for stability in the entities they fund, and a decrease in support is a killer. Part of my husband's work was in HR for a major manufacturer, was site selection for new plants, and he shared some of the criteria that they used, and you probably heard these before. An educated, skilled, adaptable workforce and quality of life for its employees, a place to know and to grow together. The library is an indicator to those judging communities that it cares about open access to information, community development, and personal development, which tends to ensure economic development and economic diversity. All this leads back to quality of life, which is a very multifaceted thing. Do I think parks are important part of life in the community? Of course, absolutely. But parks do cost to be created, maintained, repaired, staffed, and secured. What is the source of those funds, and how can that funding be sustained? Are not libraries also an essential part of our community and economic development and quality of life? Absolutely. So my question in times of fiscal limitations is, what is your priority? We live in an area where farmers, hunters, fishermen abound, so you know what it means to gut something. You cut the heart and vital organs from the entity. It will not recover. So I hope as you consider important fiscal and economic matters of this community, you do not gut the library, the beating heart of this community. Learning, discussion, and engagement comes from that, so that it won't be able to recover. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Myra Henry, and my address is 3424 Austrian Pine Circle here in Yukon. And I just want to point out some of the services that the library provides. They have materials, lending, which include books, movies, exercise kits, children's tablets. They have free events and classes, which include storytimes, reading to dogs, cooking classes, STEM classes. They have eBooks, audiobooks, streaming videos, and continuing education classes. Another thing you may not know is they provide outreach collections at senior living communities for those who cannot come and visit the library. And if you're homebound and not even in a facility, they will personally deliver books to you at your home. And they also provide online job coaching and veteran benefit assistance. Our library has received state aid grants since 1979. That's the same year that the city assumed ownership from the Ladies Library Club. State aid goes to help support the summer reading programs, purchase books, and provide a part-time position. Qualifying for this grant opens the library up to receive more grants from the Department of Libraries. Since 2017, the library has received nearly $54,000 in additional grants from the Department of Libraries. Currently, the library staff is splitting up its job duties to make sure the community is still receiving the services that they are used to. The staff is working additional weekends and evenings to cover the gap left by these currently unfulfilled positions. And one other point of interest, the total number of patrons who visited our library in the year 2023 was 84,199. And recently, in June and July, this was the summer reading program, and the total number of children, from toddlers to teens, who attended this program was 2,065. And I just, this doesn't pertain to our library, but I just wanted to point out a famous quote that Thomas Jefferson made, and it was, "I cannot live without books." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Perry. I'm a retired hairdresser. I've lived in Yukon 60 years. I live at 212 East Olympic Drive. And the library has been treated like a redheaded stepchild. And I understand the budget deficit, but if they're cutting the library staff, why shouldn't it be all the different areas, not just the library? There are people in the library, there are three with master's degrees. All the rest of them have a bachelor's degree, and one of them has a master's in the technology area. We had six full-time positions are filled. We were budgeted for seven. We have four part-time, and we were budgeted for five. The library is actually open more hours than City Hall, and there's no overtime with the way that they have to work different hours. There are 22,162 library cards out. There are 27,306 that use the Wi-Fi services. The charter schools use the library, the homeschoolers, the community meeting rooms, the low-income people sometimes come there to warm up in the winter and cool down in the summer. Computers, they use the computers, they apply for job applications there on the computers. We cannot start a bilingual program with the cuts that have been made. And the grant writer comes from within the library because they know the qualifying information to get the grants for the library. There is an annual report that you can get, and there's flyers that tell all the other information, also the universal classes, the learning systems, and all that that are Thank you for your time, and please support the library.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
You'll have to excuse me if my voice is shaky, and I'm not good at this. My name is Nina Bowdway. I live at 236 Evermore Lane, and I'm here about the library, too. And what I want to talk about is that I'm fairly new to Yukon, and I moved here with no family here. I didn't have any friends here, didn't know anyone here, no coworkers. But what I did know was where to find a library, and that's what I did. And I made some friends here and connected with people through the library. When I was a child, I would walk three miles to get to that library because it was just a safer place than where I was the other times. Libraries have a lot of meaning to a lot of people, especially children. And, I mean, they also, for adults, they provide things like parents' access to resources and information to homeschool their kids. They involve kids in programs that enrich their lives and spark the joy of learning and learning how to educate themselves, which is critically important. They provide services to prospective business owners who can then research markets and financial opportunities. They help job seekers with resume writing and looking for jobs and applying for government services. I learned how to bottle-feed day-old kittens at a library, and I learned how to take care of those kittens, and I learned how to wean those kittens at the library. And trust me, I am forever grateful to the library for helping me wean those kittens. The library provides services above and beyond the practical. It provides emotional services, psychological services. And these are not luxuries. They can be and often are the heart of a community, and so I just really, really hope you fully fund these libraries so they can continue to provide the services they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for our visitors section?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Anderson. I'm at 909 Rancho Court, and besides all the community things that the other women have talked about that are very important, I'd like to remind you that if we don't fill that position and a half, we won't qualify for the state funding, the state aid grant. That's throwing money away, and I just can't imagine why a city would want to do that. And I've taken up enough of your time, so let's keep it simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Heckin-Lively. I live at 509 Crown Drive in Yukon. I was not planning on getting up here and speaking tonight, but I think from a personal point, I am not associated with the library. I am a mother. I was a full-time adult student. The library is what helped me get through that program because I didn't have a quiet place to study, right? I know we kind of look at some of the things might be outdated. They are not. There are lots of people that do not have access to internet. It provides a nice, quiet place to study. It provides exposure to our kids, to books, which you only have so much time to get them to get exposed to books, to understand that, right? The schools, it's not as important to go to the library anymore, so it is on us to take our kids, expose them to the information. Again, without the library, I probably would not have been able to continue my education as an adult student, full-time working and mother. So I agree with what everybody has said. The library is super important, and I would really hate for that service to go away or even not be available as what it is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ralph McEwen. I live at 909 Rancho Court here in Yukon, and I just want to support this library. I want you to know that it is very important to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Crystal Heckle. I live at 826 Euclid Street, and I have been going to the library since we moved here in 2005. And everything people have said about the library is true. We need libraries, and I love your idea, Mr. Pillmore, about the park you're wanting to build in Yukon. I wish we would have done that with the current park we just built. But we do have parks already, and we need librarians. Our library is great. Both of my boys love the library, but we need to keep librarians. We need to fill those positions. We've already noticed the impact of not having those positions filled. We're having to wait for librarians because they're already being needed by other patrons. And so like they said with the grants, it does impact the programs which they do try to provide, and they do great programs which both myself as an adult and my children do enjoy, but we need librarians to be able to provide those programs. And Neil Gaiman said, "Google can bring you back 100,000 answers, but a librarian can bring you back the right one." So we really need those librarians. If we develop relationships with them, my five-year-old is very timid, but he feels so secure and comfortable going and grabbing a librarian, asking, "Would you help me find this book?" So it's teaching him to not be so shy. But now they're just being utilized because they're understaffed, so I would ask you to reconsider the parks, use that budget to fill those librarian positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Austin-Mundon. It's a little louder than I thought it was going to be. I want to say that we need to support our libraries because the studies show that when a library goes down and we don't have one, our economy goes down and the community's support goes down. These studies were done by, let me get my glasses on so I can see what I wrote, Marcella Calibello. She's a research analyst in Economic Studies. And Stuart M. Butler, a scholar and resident of Economic Studies, both at Brookings University. So it's not just people saying it, it's people that did studies. Libraries are dynamic. They're socially responsive institutions. They're a nexus of diversity and a lifeline for those most vulnerable in our community. People go there for social services, for civic services, voter registration, have meeting rooms. My late husband worked for SBA. They did meeting rooms to help people start businesses. They use the library services because they could reach the community better. It's, our Maple Fry Library is a mobile tax site. People can come in and pay their taxes there. Their support system, they get information and materials to people to get job searches, like the entrepreneurships and community connections with events that they have. Bring people together, like the one person said when she was up here. That's how she got friends and met people. There are discussions done at the library, people, even members of Congress and people that are going for voting and stuff. or trying to get votes, they'll use a library to do their meetings. So our library is very important. It's got early education, we have bright, you know, children's areas for storytelling, early learning and to teach parents how to be parents. We have the play with mama type of thing, where they learn all those things. So it's very important that we support our libraries and having a short staff makes, it makes it very hard. The community needs and the requests of visitors are increasing and, but the, the funding is decreasing if you don't fill those positions. Plus the people that are there can't serve everybody as efficiently as they could. Doing more with less does not always work, we found that out in nineteen-eighties. Government tried to cut things down and it didn't work. I know that's where I was at, the bureaucracies. So that's what I had to say, we need to support our library, we need to fill those positions so that we can serve our community and help it grow. We are the fastest-growing community, but it won't last if we don't support our, our systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for our visitor section? Right, at this time we'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pilmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time we'll consider accepting the bid and entering into a contract with Premier Vision in response to the request for proposals for the Police Department Access Control, Lighting and Surveillance System in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents to be paid of the, out of the Police Capital Improvements Budget as recommended by the Police Chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
You want to tell us about it?
Good evening. Chief Corn has personal issues, so he's not here tonight. But over the last sixteen years, our Police Department with technology has had a surveillance system internal for the Police Department that also overwatches our inmate system, which is our jail, and also our employees. This outdated system that also controls door locks throughout the station, it's just become fragile. And the company that originally manufactured it is no longer going to be able to keep up with it. So we have solicited bids and Chief Corn has presented one company that's able to come in and then absolutely replicate the current system that we have, but upgrade it to modern technology. So that's where we're at as far as trying to over, use sixteen years' worth of equipment and update it to current technology.
And that was already in our budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I will say when I went up to the Police Department too, you know, a lot of, a lot of constituents using y'all's parking lot for a safe place to meet with exchange of children. I happened to look up at the screen and noticed none of those cameras are working.
Yes, sir. So, yes, sir, a lot of those cameras over the last ten, fifteen years have gone out and we've replaced them when, when they were manufactured under the old equipment. But with time, that equipment has ceased to become available. And, and so you're right, that's, our way of doing this is do a, a complete overhaul and, and replace every single camera that's in the department.
Will we be having any PTZs on there, Pantill Zooms?
Yes, sir, we will.
Any other discussion? Thank you Deputy Chief. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pilmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. Similar, similarly, this item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, payment of material claims in the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation or disposal. The twenty-twenty-four, I'm sorry, this should read, the twenty-twenty-five, it's a Scrivener's error, the twenty-twenty-five City Council, Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting Schedules, the permanent water line easement from Five End Properties LLC and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company for a water line easement to serve the Stone Mill Commercial Phase Three Development as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pilmore?
Yes.
At this time we'll have reports from city officials, beginning with an update on the sanitation audit by Public Works Director Arnold Adams. I like the Christmas look, Arnold. Going, you're going Santa, you're gonna, you got the green, you got the beard.
Thank you, by the way. So Mr. Castro asked me to, to do an audit on our sanitation services, starting with the residential accounts and then asked just to give a brief presentation on our findings. So we have eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two residential accounts. We estimate that there's approximately two carts for each resident, which totals over seventeen thousand, seven hundred. Through our findings, we found eighty-three residents that had a third cart that should only have two, that was not paying for the third cart. Those, if you have a third cart, it costs you ten dollars a month extra. So those findings revenue loss to the city for eight hundred and thirty dollars a month. Also through that, we confirm that we have a hundred and seventy-five residents paying for a third cart. We have thirteen residents paying for a fourth cart, which you pay fifteen dollars per month. And so with this, we will, uh, we have trained our, over the past few years, we've had a pretty good turnover on drivers, but we have a good group of drivers now, we have a list in the truck. So moving forward, we will keep a good list and at least every quarter, we're going to go in and make sure. Because just like today, we have a lady that called in and after the wind, I set my, uh, both of my poly carts out, I went out and they're both gone. Where are they at? We don't know, so we just have to take two more. We will find those somewhere down the road, but maybe down the road or out in the ditch or wherever they're at.
I think it was, what, three weeks ago or so when we had a lot of weather, uh, my neighbor's cart floated, I think it wasn't very full. It flowed, it floated my way, so I just took my carts and put them back and left that one out there, I didn't know which neighbor it came from. Thank you for your work on this, Arnold, I know it's a lot of work from the team to cover all the streets in addition to picking this up to do these audits. I know Councilman Shriver discussed this quite a bit with the city manager. Any discussion, uh, council members around this audit?
Have you looked at OEMA's method that they're using right now? There's this electronic and it tells you exactly how many carts should be at that house, tells you what time they picked it up.
Yes, we have looked into that, yes.
Very interesting and very efficient.
That would be great because when we go down your street and you call, "Hey, you missed my"
Yeah, you can say, no, it wasn't out. It's a wonderful
That would be great, but yes, we are, we are looking into that.
Yep.
I've noticed these have serial numbers on them too, are y'all issuing serial numbers per residence to catch track?
Yes, yes. So we go, we know that your residence, what should be there, but I'm going to tell you the truth, we went out and just, you know, when you set yours out with your neighbors, just like, they get intertwined and it's very tough to keep. But some people are very particular, my neighbor got my cart and I want it back. Well, they, some, a lot of people keep them clean, they do a very good job.
They know their number.
They know their number.
I don't know my number.
That is mine, I want it back.
I thought this was important so we could get, um, with the new water we're about to launch out, you know, the, the, the study we did.
Absolutely.
I thought this is, kind of went hand in hand to get all on the same foot with the new billing to
And I'll be honest, when, when Mr. Castro asked us to do it, we were already kind of in the process, but I didn't believe that we would find eighty-three because we have a good group of drivers. And you know, not every week are the three carts out there, so we actually had to go look behind some fences and we actually kind of snipped around a little, if you want to say.
Sure.
We found all the extra. We're also in the process right now of all the commercial accounts, we're going through. If you pay for three times a week, we're making sure you have that size container. And we haven't found any outstanding findings on that yet, but
Sure.
we're going to go through all those.
I think the commercial will be a little bit different.
Right, it's pretty
I think your drivers do a great job, you know.
We have a great
It's a tough, it's a tough duty to pick that up every week and there's lots of room for error and they get it right. They, they do a great work.
Well, they, you know, they're one, they're one department in the city, when it snows or it rains or you expect your trash to be picked up. Yesterday, we had a truck that was down yesterday morning, somebody left the lights on overnight. We called the mechanics and they didn't show up for thirty minutes. Well, we just thought we would wait until it quit raining, well, we don't have that.
It's a luxury.
We gotta go, we have to, we need to go.
Arnold, as always, I appreciate your efforts every task we give you, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. At this time we'll have an update on the bidding process for the wastewater treatment plant by City Engineer Robbie Williams.
Uh, good evening. Uh, we'll just go back, uh, just want to go through the dates. On September eighteenth, the council gave us permission to advertise for the Yukon Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's our phase-one project we're doing. On October ninth, we received our, uh, Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit to construct the project. And then we're required by law to advertise, uh, our projects for a minimum of twenty-one days. So on, uh, October fourteenth was the first day we advertised and we always advertise a week later, which is on October twenty-first. And then after the two advertisements, we will have a mandatory pre-bid conference with any of the bidders that want to bid so that they come, we can go over the project, uh, address their answers and receive their information. So on October twenty-fourth, we had that mandatory pre-bid. And then tomorrow, uh, we will open bids on the project at four PM. And the, uh, so the, we will bring that to the City Council in December to award the project. And I want to go over the schedule, the construction schedule with you a little bit. As we had the mandatory pre-bid with the conference, we, we have equipment for this project that, they're not off-the-shelf items. Some of these are going to take anywhere from two-hundred-and-seventy-five to three-hundred, three-hundred-and-twenty-five days to actually get, get the product here in Yukon. We're talking electrical equipment, the blowers, the large blowers for the Eration Basin. So what, so what we've done, uh, in, as part of the bidding process, the council will award it in December, we've told the contractors, February first, twenty-twenty-five, we will start your time and we're going to give them six hundred calendar days. That gets us to September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six. And that also gives us an extra summer. If we cannot get work done this summer that we need to do, then we know we have the following summer. This provides flexibility to the contractors, it's not going to drive the price up. But this is just where we are today with what we're doing, this is going on all over the country. People are making improvements to water plants, wastewater plants and so forth and so on, so we just
Are we using ARPA funds for any of this?
That's correct.
Is this going to hurt our deadlines on spending that money?
No, ma'am. The, the construction dollars for the ARPA funds have to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, so we'll have, have time.
And, and I believe the six hundred calendar days is more than enough, I, I don't anticipate it taking that long, but you know, when we have these mandatory pre-bid meetings with the contractors, we listen to them. And, uh, so anyway, we acted and, and so that's what we've done.
Do you believe that you're going to bring the recommendation for the awarding of the bid to the first or the second December meeting?
My go, my goal is to bring it to the first meeting. We have a quick turnaround, we open bids tomorrow. You know, I, I'm pretty sure, uh, with being Thanksgiving, we get the agenda done early next week. We'll just have to see how it goes. It's, it's a very quick turnaround is what I'm telling you.
Yeah, I think it's essential that we issue for that, I think it's prudent, keeps us on schedule, it doesn't put us, put us, this, this has to be awarded by the end of the year and I, I like some room for error, like to have a little buffer.
We, we all do, we all, we all do.
Okay.
So.
Thank you Robbie. Any other questions from council members?
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll consider approving Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, expressing support for the continuance of a summer reading program. I'll read this resolution at this time and we had so many thoughtful, uh, community members speak on behalf of the library. Uh, this resolution expresses support for the library and the continuance of the summer reading program. Libraries continue, contribute to the intellectual growth of children and teens during the summer through reading programs. Summer reading programs bring children and teens into the local library for reading and cultural activities. And children and teens can benefit from summer reading programs that combine elements of youth development principles with academic enrichment. And visiting their local library provides children with access to unlimited amounts of reading materials. And whereas school and public librarians have cooperatively produced summer reading lists to enhance both learning and recreation and studies of children's and teens' reading development cite the importance of extensive, successful reading experiences in the development of reading proficiency. Whereas young library users will receive an opportunity to become lifelong readers and learners by visiting the library frequently. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Yukon commits to ensuring that the Mabel Seafry Library shall be provided adequate funding to ensure that the summer reading programs for all children and teens are maintained in their current format. This is adopted by the City Council of the City of Yukon and signed by the mayor this nineteenth day of November. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. And the position that we're not refilling is the one who plans the summer reading program. And so I think resolutions are wonderful and that's real nice, but if we don't have the funding because we're not getting the grant and we don't have the position who's going to plan it and execute it, how are we going to come, how are we going to hold good on this resolution?
I think the resolution ensures that city staff is being directed to ensure that the summer reading program continues in its current format. And I would expect the city staff led by the city manager to ensure that that occurs if this is successfully passed.
Again, if we're short-staffed, I, I just want to point out that if we're short-staffed and the person that we're short-staffed by is the one who does the program and so we're asking the ones, our current employees to do something they haven't done and that they're already doing their regular jobs. Again, I, I think that's great, we're going to resolve to do this, but until we make a commitment to replace these employees and get that federal money and the state money, it's going to be difficult.
I've, I've actually, I believe that been in this situation before and I know they have because my wife stepped in and helped plan summer reading programs at the library for years, she's a former, um, library staffer.
So will she volunteer to do some of that?
Absolutely not, no.
Wow.
But she would say that they're, that this is an important program and somebody can step in and get it done like, like she was asked to do when she worked there.
Right, but again, if we're short-staffed, I just want to continue to point out.
Mr. City Manager, do you believe that we can ensure that this reading program, if this resolution is passed, that we carry on this reading program in the summer?
I can, Mayor, I think I'll, I'll work with the librarian and we'll come up with a way to make this happen.
Okay, that gives me the confidence, I've, I've spoken with the Ladies Library Club and met with them. I enjoyed last Friday's community coffee and the wonderful work of the Ladies Library Club fundraising. I was thankful that I won one item, uh, you know, despite, uh, all the efforts of everybody to outbid me. But I, I, you know, there's no lack of support for the library. I think you'll find, as we heard this evening, the whole community loves the library, my children visit it often. I was in there with my daughter and had to peel her away from, from the tablets and tell her that it was time to go home with the book we checked out. And I'm confident that the summer reading program will go on. If we can pass this resolution to reaffirm that, I think that, that would be my recommendation and I fully support the reading program as well as the other programs that the library does and enjoy, you know, getting, getting the, the program guide and seeing the stuff that goes on and seeing what can benefit, you know, you and your family. You know, there's a great, great calendar every, every month that's published that will tell you exactly what's going on each day.
Well, I support the resolution and if it doesn't happen in June, I expect you all back.
Oh, I, I'm confident they'll be back before then for the fun things that happen at city council meetings. Any other discussion on this item? See, oh, yes, yes, sir, Mister Burris.
Mike Burris, Three Hundred East Platte Drive. I just wanted to, I didn't, this really isn't my issue, but Max went to the summer reading program and, and came back to the house and actually read out loud to me. It was a really big deal, you know? I mean, it's, it was, it was something I, I need to support the library.
Absolutely. And, and Max getting sharper. I remember Max when he was, you know, knee-high, so.
Well, you know, Max actually told me, because his nan and I have said this for years, if you can learn to read, there's a book on everything that will teach you how to do it.
Absolutely. It's a great way to self-learn. I know that Susan and Mike stress that with their grandkids.
I would like to mention, sometimes, sometimes businesses get shorthanded. And sometimes it takes other employees stepping up to cover that work. Our police department's been shorthanded for years. The other day I rode around, we had four officers on duty. To keep you all safe, we had four officers on duty. We're supposed to have six. So it's just not the library. So please keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll tell you, I, like I said, my family knows firsthand how important these summer reading programs are. My wife is currently a teacher at Yukon High School and, and she's seen kids graduating Yukon High School the last few years that the library worked with when she was there coming through those summer reading programs. And it's, it's awesome to her. She enjoys getting to see every, every one of them come through and remembers each one of them coming to those programs.
I do want to read one other item that I received via email from a library supporter who was not able to be here tonight. She doesn't drive in the evenings. Donita Reynolds of one one eight one Plaza Drive explained that she was not in favor of a new park and would rather use those resources to maintain or add services to the library, which she, of, of which she makes extensive use. See, she summarized the list of things that she has been assisted with at the library and said that the staff was always pleasant, kind and helpful to her. She's hopeful that the city could even add library services that are tailored to the over seventy-five age group. Any other comments? Seeing no additional comments or discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote for this resolution?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider accepting the Freedom Trail Playground and Splash Pad Project and placing the maintenance bonds into effect to serve Freedom Trail Park with the final payment of seventy-seven thousand fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving budget amendment number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine to increase appropriations to exceed, not to exceed forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for building of a new playground. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, what, whose budget are we going to take forty-nine thousand dollars out of? You can't, we don't print money in Yukon like.
At the moment, the way that this one reads, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Clerk, it ends up adjusting one of the capital budgets. But we could, we could amend that. Is that correct?
Typically, that's how it works and usually there are capital projects that may not be able to be funded during the year. We, we end up with some surplus.
But that's at the end. Right. Right now, we've had six months of tax sales revenue that is down. We're not, we're in a hiring freeze. We have nine parks already and to spend forty-nine thousand dollars when we're in a hiring freeze and our sales tax down seems frivolous to me in spite, in what we've heard tonight. I know you want a park, but not with our sales tax down like this and a hiring freeze.
Any other discussion on this item? Any public comment?
Exactly what I was saying. Thank you, Miss Shelby. We need to fund what's already been budgeted. The library positions have already been budgeted. We don't need new expenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would we be willing to set this aside for a little bit and see how we feel in a month or two and see if things are changing?
You know, I think the, the vision for this playground that I laid out in the working session from the last meeting is that it's a different way to construct playground equipment. It uses a lower cost model than has been used in recent past in the City of Yukon. If you look at our existing parks, we have a playground, a piece of playground equipment that's behind the ball fields. We have one at Kimball. We have a really small one at Hillcrest, a couple other small pieces of equipment. But there's a plan that Parks and Rec has on the, on the table to replace and increase those pieces of playground equipment. Think swings, slides, et cetera, et cetera. That children enjoy and use and those pieces that exist today, there's a few of them in the newly created Freedom Trail Playground are well-used. They're very busy. The splash pad elements are only used for part of the year. This, this small amount of money that we're, that we propose to allocate here would allow us to see if this approach is successful. See if this playground equipment is an economical way to, to construct a playground. And if it's successful, I think what will be in the twenty-five to twenty-six capital plan for Parks and Rec will be four to eight of these types of things for the other eight parks around the city. That's my vision for it. That's what I think Yukon needs. Economical equipment that children enjoy and is stable, sturdy, long-lasting and low-cost to maintain. The approach of highly manufactured special surfaces with very customized, you know, every bolt is a custom part or every, every surface is specially painted, is very expensive to maintain. This proposal that we walked through in the working session during the last meeting is essentially it's iron pipe that is painted nicely and has swings and bars and so on. The kids, it's, it's the old-school playground equipment that we played on.
Which would be great if we were in a town that had no parks, but we currently have nine parks and some of those do need some of their parts replaced. And, and I get why you want to do this, but we have nine parks and we are in an economic downfall right now. And with Oklahoma City just sucking us dry with tax money, again, forty-nine thousand, yeah, you're right. That's not a lot of money in the scheme of things. But to the library, it's an employee. You ha, I think you were going to speak?
Good evening. Jeff Canow, I live at nine seven eight Hilltop Mansion in Yukon. My wife Tricia works at the library and I come to speak on this matter for those participants of, of library storytime who it's probably past their bedtime by now, but maybe not. If this council does insist on approving this measure, I do ask that you consider the construction of this new park to be on the grounds of Maple Sea Fry Library so that it can be utilized by, by people who are already there. Our storytime participants and families who are already patronizing the library and this will allow our library to strengthen their mission and their support of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Did you want to speak, Amy?
That's interesting.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great idea, again, in a different economic time, but Amy, I think wanted to speak.
Amy Walters, nine fifteen Stone Creek Boulevard. I would just like to say that tonight, the passion has been for the library. I haven't seen anybody, any other people from the community saying we need this extra playground. But again, the passion, the proof in success. Data proves libraries work. I feel like we're kind of going out in an experiment with a new type of playground. But in, at this time, again, the passion for people here in Yukon is the Maple Sea Fry Library and funding it adequately. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you for your service to the library.
So I'm going to amend my motion that we table this and so we can go back and maybe look at your, at your idea. That's a, I like that. That's, that's neat. So I'd like to motion to table this until a future time.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
Any other discussion on this item?
I will say I mingled around out there. I do quite a bit of running out there at the trails, so I always come back around near the splash pad. I got a little two-and-a-half-mile loop bike running out there. And so I made a little bit longer loop and I went over there and talked with a couple people. You know, not everybody's against this. Our older kids do need something. The splash pad ain't it. It's made for six, seven toddlers. Where our community's running out of things to do. We don't have a bowling alley anymore. We don't have our arcade and go-karts anymore if you guys have been here that long. Our older teens are running out of things to do or if we don't get them involved in something, our sporting complexes are gone. The fields we grew up playing are history. Our, our prep league baseball's not here. These kids have to have something to keep them busy, whether it's reading at the library, playing at a park, anything to get them out of the house.
We do have a new disc golf, which instead of using city monies, I did find twenty-five thousand dollars got donated to the city to pay for it. So maybe we get some money donated to build a park, but we do have disc golf for our older kids.
That is true. We do have a disc golf, but the town is slowly running things, so we do need to keep that in mind as well for, for the twelve, thirteen-year-old children.
I agree, and I think a combination of reading, which is extremely important, playing outside, anything that gets them off these for a little bit. And you'd be amazed, I watched high school kids cleaning the woods on our cross-country course and not one of them had one of these in their hands for about forty minutes straight. It was amazing. I also see the kids that like to read will keep those out of their hands for a while also.
Okay, the motion on the table, or the motion at, on hand is to table this item until later time. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, a resolution designating the City of Yukon's primary banking services provider and secondary banks for investment. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, in the resolution, there were four banks listed. When, when did we all get together and decide on those four banks?
We didn't get together and decide. I wrote up that resolution and put it in the agenda to be reviewed and discussed here at this meeting.
So do you want to list those four banks?
The four banks, the primary bank is the one that the city staff and city manager recommended, Bank of Oklahoma. And secondary banks to be reviewed periodically for investment rates are RBC, F and M Bank and, and Bank First. Any other discussion?
And those all came from the top of city staff's list is where those were from?
Of the, let's see here. Yeah, Mister Castro, can you remind me, one of, one of those three was not in city staff's top five?
R, RBC.
RBC was not. In reviewing, you know, as I reviewed, you know, the extensive proposal that, that RBC put together and, and all the other banks, but RBC's in particular was very strong when it comes to trust services, very strong in investment alternatives. And they've been very involved in our community. Their principal officer here in the city has served on many boards, commissions and, and even one of our municipal authorities.
They were on my top three.
Thank you, counsel.
I think that matters. I like their.
Thank you.
Proposal.
Well, and again, I just think that it's important for them to be local banks because those are the ones that are supporting all of our school events and all of our city events. And so it needs to be people that are involved in our community.
Excellent. Any other discussion on this item?
Mayor, I do have one, one comment that I want to indulge council on momentarily. With regard to some of the timelines that are associated in here, we, we shall endeavor to meet those timelines. I know that it used very positive language in the, in the resolution, shall. Some of this is dependent on the banks that are involved in this process. And we, we, we may or may not be able to expedite the process with some of the banks. So to the degree possible, we will meet both the spirit and intent of what is in the resolution and we understand the urgency with which council desires for us to make the transition.
I think if you have, also if you have issues with the implementation and integration, because these banks, that's part of their proposal that they told us what their implementation timelines were, what their resources that they were going to dedicate, what they needed from city staff. If there are issues, we need, as a council, we need to hear about that in, at the two December meetings in particular.
Correct. Just be mindful that there is a departing bank and an incoming bank.
Yes. Understand. I think the resolution, you know, speaks in positive language about the, the timelines and the, also the allowable nature of leaving deposits if and where there are penalties for early withdrawal. It's fine to leave those in place until they mature.
Again, just a little indulgence from council on this. We'll do our best.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the purchase of Ditchwich HX thirty vacuum excavation system from Ditchwich of Oklahoma off state contract S W one nine three to be purchased out of the water sewer capital improvements in the total amount of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the purchase of MFWD sixteen-by-sixteen tractor and flow mower by, to be purchased off of Sourcewell contract zero seven zero eight-two-one dash T G R from P and K Equipment in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to be paid from the street cap, street department capital budget as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Saying the bar ditch mower, is it, Arnold?
Yes.
You're going to mow bar ditches with this quarter-million-dollar mower? Bar ditch. You're going to mow bar ditches with this?
This mower will mow all of our rightaways and easements, which is the bar ditches, yes. And it's actually, it's misspelled, it's a flail mower, not a flow mower. Sixteen-foot back-wing flail mower.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Arnold. Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving Health Center Parkway drainage improvements in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents to be paid out of ARPA funds to be completed by Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mister Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving change order number three with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for the twenty twenty-three concrete and asphalt paving drainage water and sewer project in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents as recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This was budgeted.
This change order item goes with the item you just approved, which is budgeted.
So it's coming out of the, so it's coming out of ARPA funds.
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, this change order's a, a housekeeping item to go along with item number ten.
I'm just marking capital improvement. When people come back to me saying, "What do you mean, spending that money?" I'm gonna go, "Hey, it was a capital improvement project. It was budgeted." Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ARPA funds.
Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a fee proposal for engineering and inspection services for the well field transmission line relocation for OKC roadway project PC zero-eight-zero-seven Check Hall Road from Southwest Fifteenth Street to Reno Ave from Team Design to be paid out of the ARPA funds in the amount of fourteen thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider accepting the bid and entering into a contract with Premier Vision in response to the request for proposals for the police department access control, lighting, and surveillance system in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents to be paid out of the police capital improvements budget as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discuss, additional discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving, entering into an agreement with Team Design for providing city planning, engineering services, and detailed construction plans until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, with the option to extend on a month-by-month basis if needed, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the sidewalk construction improvements from Vandeman Ave to Trenton Terrace on Cornwell Drive in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents to be paid out of street department capital improvements using twenty-twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Drainage, uh, Concrete Asphalt Paving with Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving a fee proposal from Team Design in the amount of fi, fifty thousand dollars for additional design work for the northbound Garth Brooks Boulevard pavement replacement to be included in the ODOT ramp modification project as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving ordinance number fourteen-sixty-four, an ordinance amending the Employee Retirement System Defined Benefit Plan for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by adopting a revised and restated retirement plan, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing for purpose and reorganiz, uh, purpose and organization, providing for definitions, providing for eligibility and participation, providing for non-alienation of benefits, providing for employee and employer and employee contributions, providing for accounting, allocation, and valuation, providing benefits, providing for required notice, providing for amendments and termination, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating a retirement committee, and providing for powers, duties, and rights of retirement committee, providing for payment of certain, certain obligations, providing for duration and payment of expenses, providing for effective date, providing for vesting schedules, providing for a fund to finance the system to be pooled with other incorporated cities, towns, and their agencies and instrumentalities for the purposes of, of administration, management, and investment as part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for payment of all contributions under the system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund for management and investment, providing for repealer and severability, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm glad I went to the library to learn how to read like that. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll consider and approve emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen-sixty-four. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving Budget Amendment twenty-two-four dash ten to increase revenue for the purchase of two drones for the police department from being awarded a grant through the Attorney General's Office. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that a grant for the whole amount, or is it a matching grant?
Yes, ma'am. It was a grant I applied for this summer. It pays for the full funding of two new drones.
We like that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Deputy Chief. Mr. Clerk, please call for the vote.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. Is there any new business?
Done this evening, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera. It's not intended for the conduct of city business by public, by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
Yes, today at the Rotary Club, we had a person come and talk about Work Ready, and that is for people that are unemployed, underemployed, or re-entering the employment program. If you know anybody in those areas, it's an amazing program. They help you get your resume ready, find you a job, and coach you through it. Work Ready, it's gonna be up where One Faith, um, used to be, and they will open in January, but they're already taking, you can just go to Facebook, go to Work Ready Oklahoma and find their location. Also, I would like to thank Net's Catering. We had our Thanksgiving meal today, and if you've never used them, they had the best rolls. It was amazing. Thank you. So have a happy Thanksgiving.
I agree.
Yes, yes. Um, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Well, I gotta second the catering. The food was fantastic. Rolls were phenomenal. Uh, just have a, have a happy Thanksgiving next week. We're getting in a hurry this time of year, and we jump straight to Christmas.
That's right.
Thanksgiving is one of my favorite holidays just because of how it made this whole experiment in the United States possible. So, happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Shriver.
Yes, this is a holiday's approach. Remember patience, be nice, be thoughtful with others, and stay safe. Vice Mayor Wooten.
Mr. Zimmerman, Merry Christmas. Just have to throw that out there. Uh, Chill Your Cheeks is coming up, and Mr. Pillmore is running. Mr. Zimmerman's gonna run, right? After I ate that roll, I'm not running anywhere. Shelley said she'd be more than happy to run.
I will not, but also.
She said she's gonna be more than happy to run, so it's good to have her running this year.
Rick Kachini, who carries our flag every year, has been told by his wife that he can't run because he still has cracked ribs, so I offered.
Carry the flag.
I offered Councilman Wooten to carry the flag this year, so. I offered that at lunch today, so he will be calling.
So, Saturday will come out, uh, the lights will be turned on and people will be running.
Saturday's gonna be a busy day. We have the opening of Christmas in the Park. It begins with a four-thirty PM mascot dash, followed by Mr. Wooten's Chill Your Cheeks five-K at five PM, and, uh, five-thirty PM, the Jingle Walk. Uh, and then also starting at the same time, five-thirty PM to eight PM, Kris Kringle Carnival includes stage performances and the ca, characters of Frozen, Anna, Elsa, Olaf, and Sven. Six PM, the gates open for the Christmas lights. Seven PM, there's a drone show, and they've been, uh, doubling the number of drones each year. So now I think we got a hundred drones up in the air, so make sure you watch that. And seven-thirty PM, there's gonna be a prize drawing for Kringle Carnival. That location is at Chisholm Trail Park. All the activities are free except for the Chill Your Cheeks five-K. Make sure you sign up for that. It's forty dollars for adults, thirty-five dollars for youth after, uh, November nineteenth. Christmas in the Park runs from November twenty-third to December thirty-first, nightly from six PM to eleven PM. That's held at city parking in Chisholm Trail Park. Entrance to the light is free. Donations are accepted. Additional optional costs include the train rides, the ice skating, and food trucks. Um, please join us there. And then also, December fifth, an event for the kids, uh, the Mayor's Great Christmas Quest. Four PM will begin registration, and the event begins at four-thirty PM. It's, it's geared towards ages five to twelve, but all ages and groups and families are welcome, uh, held at Chisholm Trail Park. There's a Christmas scavenger hunt um, for displays, special guests, and hidden secrets. The grand prize is an OLED Nintendo Switch, and also there will be stations for Christmas cookies and hot chocolate.